All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, July ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, meeting of the planning commission to order. If we can get the roll call, please.
Chair Wyler.
Here.
Vice Chair Barber.
Here.
Commissioner Makaro. Commissioner Spear. Commissioner Jester.
Here.
And Commissioner Stevie.
Here.
And Commissioner Correll.
Here.
Let's go ahead and move on to approval of the minutes. Anybody have any comments or questions? If not, I would move to approve the minutes with the changes as recommended by the city planner per the memo that we've got here. And if we could, if I could get a second.
Second.
First and second, if we could vote.
Voting has been opened. Can you refresh your screens? Please, Chair Wyler and Vice Chair Barber. We can take your vocal votes. The vote is four zero to approve with two of states.
Thank you. At this point, do we have any written communications on any items that are not on the agenda this evening?
None of this stuff.
Any oral communications?
None.
At this point, we'll go ahead and move to the public hearings. Current business will be PL twenty-three dash zero four four zero. It's the Conway subdivision design review. And we've got the staff presentation.
Chair Wyler, do you want to ask for disclosures first?
Thank you. And I've got it even written down here. I still didn't do it. Any disclosures on this item?
No.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. Ivan Flores, Senior Planner with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting on item two. Before I continue to the presentation, I just want to correct for the record that there are two corrections as identified in the memo that was provided to the planning commission. And that is to the resolution attached to this item, which was noted as Resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-five, when the resolution number should be number twenty-two-four dash twelve. And the other item that needs to be corrected is that the staff report indicates that the design review permit would be for forty-six market rate homes. However, the design review permit is for forty-four market rate homes. The other two homes that were mentioned in the staff report are in reference to the existing single-family residences that were part of the subdivision at the time. Nothing is being proposed for those existing residential structures. Before I go into my presentation, I'd like to provide just a very brief overview as to what the planning commission will be reviewing today and approving. The design review permit is outlined in Article sixty-four of the Escondido zoning code. There are two pathways for a design review permit as outlined in the article. Typically, the planning commission is responsible for reviewing and approving design review permits that are tied to discretionary actions such as a planned development permit, a condo permit that's tied to a subdivision, and other discretionary projects that involve new construction. Typically, for single-family subdivisions, these types of projects are reviewed at a staff level. So if it meets that criteria identified in Section thirty-three dash thirteen fifty-five subsection B, it would just be reviewed at a staff level where we work with the applicant on the design of the project against our design review standards. However, in this case, the planning commission, as a condition of approval on the original entitlement for the Conway subdivision, also known as Capistrano now, the project was required to undergo design review under by the planning commission. And so typically, this would not go to the planning commission for what's considered production homes of five or more lots. This would be approved at a staff level, but there are mechanisms there for planning commission review. The item before the planning commission tonight is a design review permit, and we are only presenting the architectural elevations for the proposed subdivision, for the approved subdivision. Just for some background, on February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, the city council approved the request for an annexation tentative subdivision map, granting exemption and density bonus agreement for the project known as, back then, as the Conway subdivision. The applicant, Beazer Homes, is proposing the architectural elevations that we'll be going over today. And the development is now known as, is now known as Capistrano. The project permitted up to fifty-six unit residential, for fifty-six unit residential subdivision. Forty-four of those single-family lots are for market rate, which are, which will be in front of the planning commission today. There's five duplexes that are tied to a affordable housing component. And then the two existing single-family residences that are not part of this review today. This plotting plan shows the location of all the proposed single-family residences in conformance with the development standards that were associated with the initial entitlement, the original entitlement. As you can see here, this development complies with all those development standards such as reduced setbacks. However, every structure that is proposed will comply with floor ratio, lot coverage, and any other setbacks that were part of the design waivers associated with the Conway subdivision. The red denotes enhanced elevations, and the purpose of the enhanced elevations is to provide additional articulation for those that are, whether it's a portion of the elevation that's viewable from the public right-of-way or from adjacent private properties. The enhanced elevations take many forms. They could be dropped eaves on those components, on those sections of the buildings. They could be window trim around the windows, various arc elevations, enhanced elevations, depending on the scheme that's identified in that, on that lot. Here, we see the southern section of the development. And so, as again, what you see is the enhanced elevations from the public right-of-way and from adjacent properties. And it's really meant to provide additional relief for, for these architectural styles. The applicant proposes three different plans, and we'll go into details for those plans in the later slides. However, each plan meets the criteria or the standards that you see here. So Plan One is the top left. All those structures will be about two thousand three hundred and thirty-three square feet, single-story, three bedrooms, and nine light, non, nine lots contain this option. The second plan is the plan to the top right. Those are the two-story units, and those will comprise about seventeen lots within the subdivision. The bottom, bottom photo is the last, is the last plan that they are proposing. And each of these plans have three different architectural styles that we'll go into detail. All these plans have different options for layouts, whether that's a location of a kitchen, a location of a great room. Despite these different options, the building footprint itself will not change. And so while an applicant, while a potential buyer may choose an additional or a different layout, they all fall within the parameters as you see here. Here, we see Plan One, or yeah, Plan Scheme One, which is the modern Spanish, which is a modern take on the Spanish architectural style. The applicant is proposing concrete S tiles for the roofing material, primarily stucco, which is consistent with this type of architectural style. As you can see from the tiles that frame the entrance into the structures themselves, the applicant is using different tile colors, which is consistent with recommendations that planning staff had provided to the applicant as they went through the design review process at a staff level. Typically, we work with the applicant on proposing material, various materials, various architectural pop-outs or elements that are really intended to provide variety within the subdivision. Here, we see what they are calling as the modern craftsmen. Here, they will be using a concrete flat tile with varying siding designs from horizontal to vertical, a wood siding, stone veneer for the columns, and wood posts above to support the porches. This is a modern take on the craftsman style. As you can see, they do include stone veneer, which is a, supposed to be consistent with the natural material that's typically associated with the craftsman architectural style. The range for the two stories and the single stories range from eighteen feet, and this is consistent with all the plans. Is, Plan One is about eighteen feet. Plan Two is approximately twenty-five feet, and Plan Three is approximately twenty-six feet in height, which is consistent with the underlying zoning requirements. And here, we have the take on the modern adobe style. They are incorporating two different elements from the Spanish and the craftsmen. So here, we have some stone veneer framing the front elevations of the buildings in addition to concrete tiles for the roofing material. Here, in some of these elevations, you can see the exposed dropped eaves specifically on the building to the, third building to the right. These drop thieves are enhanced elevations that people would be able to see from the right-of-way or from adjacent properties. February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, when the city council approved the project, they also adopted an initial study mitigated negative declaration for the Conway subdivision. Since this project would not result in any new impacts, since it entails nominal changes to design for thoughts for previously approved project, the project doesn't require further environmental review, and a notice of determination will be filed with the county clerk. Pursuant to Article sixty-one, no public hearing is required by the Escondido zoning code for design review permits by the planning commission. However, it is a public meeting, and so the public is more than welcome to attend, but it's, we are not required to do public everything as a part of, as a part of this permit. Based on the analysis contained in the staff report and within this presentation, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution number twenty-two-four dash twelve, approving the design review permit for the Capistrano subdivision. Staff is here to answer any questions that the commission may have, and so is the applicant and the applicant's architect. Thank you.
Thank you. Just real quick on a, on a question, is this resolution, it's Resolution twenty-two-four? I got it. I see. Thank you. Never mind. Comments, questions from planning commission?
Yeah. First of all, I don't doubt that staff, as other than that, the plan commission conditioned this project to bring the design review back to life. I'm racking my head trying to remember why we did that and that we did it. So can the staff please read to me the exact motion that was made that made this condition and perhaps which commissioner made the motion?
That's a very good question. As you are aware, this project was brought by the previous city planner, Adam Finestone, in conjunction with one of our consultants. After reviewing the, the audio for the planning commission meeting and reviewing previous iterations of the staff report, it appears that this was a condition that was proposed by staff and was attached to the resolution that the planning commission approved. And so while there is no, there was no direct guidance from the planning commission, it appears that staff incorporated this condition of approval into the project. Additionally, it appears that the, the design review section of Article sixty-four does allow the director to agendize items to the planning commission if they feel that the, the project itself would be detrimental to its surroundings. And it's, I don't want to make any assumptions, but I'm assuming that that's, that's what occurred during the lead-up to the public hearing for the Conway subdivision.
Veronica, were you here? Do you recall why staff would volunteer such an unusual condition?
Yes. So unfortunately, I don't think I was present at that public meeting at that time doing long-range planning. I was not present. However, as Ivan noted, Article sixty-four does have an escalation component within the ordinance and allows for the director to essentially escalate the review from staff to planning commission. And given the nature of this project, which I was aware of at that time as our long-range planner, I would make an inference that it was escalated for that purpose.
So I'm reading, when I read staff reports mentioning that in the design review, there's components are conditioned to be visually and architecturally similar designs, color schemes, size of materials, as well as landscape, et cetera. So can I assume then, when we approve this, we're approving that entire design review package, including the color schemes?
Yes. When you're, when you, what you're going to be approving today is the architectural elevations, which include the color scheme, the materials that are proposed for the exteriors of the buildings, but that is what you, what you are limited to.
My next question is, is this something I'm personally comfortable with? So are we saying, once this is, once this is adopted, that not only does the developer with this new construction is restricted to these color schemes, but when a future homeowner purchases their own home, they're also restricted to these color schemes? They can't perhaps, for example, choose in the future that they want to paint the house a pale yellow, but it's not in the color scheme, so they're denied that opportunity?
No, that's not the case. And so there are sections within the design review permit process as outlined in Article sixty-four that allow changes to colors or elevations that were associated with an approved design review permit. However, those don't have to come back to planning commission. Those can be approved at a staff level review.
And if a future homeowner decides he, he would like to have his home in a color that is not a part of this design review package, and he has to go to staff to process it, how much are the fees that they're going to have to pay to get permission to paint their house pale yellow? Is it the HOA?
So are you talking about like the, the, the planning review fees that we would charge for what's considered a minor design review?
So for example, he was suggesting that they're going to go to HOA. Who comes to staff for, for approval to, you choose a different color that's not in the color scheme?
So the design review permit process does not regulate colors unless it's associated with a project that was approved through an action by the, by an approving body. Whether it's an, whether it's between the applicant, the resident, and the HOA, that's a private matter. We, that's something that they would have to figure out between themselves. However, if a property owner wanted to come and make changes to their structure, whether it's elevate, new construction, they would go through a building permit process, and we would review it against that process. However, no, they are not required to come back to planning commission. That is correct.
Is that correct?
I could just clarify. The design review permit applies to the developer, not to an individual who purchases.
Okay, well, that's pretty much how I began my question. Okay, thank you. Look, I lived in a neighborhood where I had three new neighbors. They painted, one painted their house bright pink, one painted their house orange, and then the other lavender. So, I mean, I've been exposed to some pretty bad choices, but I still kind of respect it as their home. I'm not helping with the property taxes. I just want to make sure these future homeowners have their rights. That's the end of my speech.
Yes. Commissioner Jester?
Thank you. Hello? Can you hear me? I had a couple of questions. So is this an HOA?
This will be a part of an HOA, and the applicant, Beazer Homes, will be going through the CCR process that the city will review.
Okay, thank you. Regarding the enhanced elevations, it looks like they're on the back of the house. Am I looking at this subdivision map wrong? Is the entrance off Conway, or is it off of a new street?
So there's two, two components, right? There's the, the larger section here that you're seeing on the map, which is the section that has access off of, not, what would be Stanley Avenue. So this is the larger component. To the south of this, this.
Wait, wait, Conway or Stanley?
So this, there's multiple intersections that, for this project's development. There's Conway, which you are seeing right here.
Right.
Stanley runs here, and this is later, right here. So the larger component of the development has access off of Stanley.
Can you go back to the, the picture with the lots? Yeah, okay. So you got Conway at the top of the page, and you got the red lines on the, on the Conway side of the new street, Street A. Is that where, is that the front of the house or the back of the house?
Off of, off of Street A, this component, this portion of the street?
The red line is that?
This is the rear of the house.
That's the rear of the house?
Yes.
So the architectural enhancements will be on the rear of the house?
Yes, where you can see it from Conway Drive.
Okay, okay. That's interesting.
Typically, when it comes to larger developments, the builder tends to, not necessarily Beazer, tends to have not what we call three sixty architecture. So they tend not to carry the architectural elements that we see on the front facade.
Oh, no, I, yeah, I, I totally, I totally get that. I'm just wondering, if that's on the back of the house, what's on the front of the house?
The front of the house is what you.
Because I didn't see any elevations in my packet.
Yeah, so the front of the house is going to be all of these schemes that you're seeing.
Okay. And then the back of the house is going to be similar to this without the garage door and the front entry?
That is correct. Some of them, and what we do is we have additional slides. If you were to go through the staff report, there are additional elevations that are shown that show the enhanced elevations.
I have the whole thing, but I can't.
So here, what we see is we see the different plan, Plan Ones. And so at the, some of these sides and rears, what you see are enhanced enhancements, such as these drop thieves. See this here?
Okay, and that, and that's on the Conway side, or that's on the?
It depends on, it depends on where, which scheme they're plotting.
Okay, that drop thief is part of the enhancement, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Sorry, I was just a little confused on that. Also, another question that I had was, you, you said there was nine single-family Plan Ones? Or single-story Plan Ones?
That is correct.
Kind of ten. I guess I better go back and recount them.
Might be nine or ten. I'm, the applicant may be, the architects also here if they, if you need them to clarify.
Who decides the style and the color scheme?
So the design review process is really a, it's a, it's an ongoing conversation with the developer. And so what they do is they move, they provide, they provide staff with a proposed architectural style. And we work with them reviewing design review standards and just best practices. And so we really do rely on the applicant to provide us in working with their architect on, on a proposed style. And then we make sure that it complies with the design review standards outlined in Article sixteen.
Yeah, that, that really wasn't my question. I'm sorry. I'll be more clear. Okay, so the architectural designs that Beazer has for these homes are great. They're, they're wonderful. But who decides each individual lot gets what? I mean, what's to stop somebody from purchasing Lot One and then somebody coming in and they, they say, we want the adobe style, you know, or the, and then, and then somebody comes in and buys Lot Two, and they say, well, we want the adobe style two. And then the third lot, we, we want that adobe, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and I think I understand your question, and it's, it might be best for the applicant to address that question since they're in the, you know, the realm of development, and they probably have a better idea as to how they choose to plot these plans.
And before the applicant comes up to answer that portion of your question, Commissioner Jester, part of what the design review would submit is the proposed plotting as shown. So currently, on the site plans, it denotes the floor plan and the design type that would be allocated to that specific lot. And that is a part of the design review process. So part of it is to reduce, you know, redundancy of the same style right next to each other, back and forth, back and forth.
That was my, that was my question. Yeah. Okay, I didn't see that they had the, I saw the, the plan, but I didn't see the actual color scheme or style associated with it. But yeah, that's, that's a good idea. So you don't have to put three of the same over here and six of the same over there. I mean, everybody has their personal preferences. I'm not sure, you know, how Beazer's gonna, you know, address the prospective buyers coming in and, you know, dealing with what they might want. But that answers, I think, my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Stevie?
All right, I have a few questions for staff. The first is, with respect to the color schemes, the modern craftsmen and modern adobe color schemes in specific do not seem to be in keeping with the characteristics of the developments surrounding this development. In other words, if you were to drive within, say, a ten-block radius of this proposed development, you have some longstanding homes, which I'm not really counting. But then you have a series of brand-new developments, the color schemes of which, generally speaking, are beiges, whites, tans, all the usual wonderful color schemes we've come to love and appreciate here in Southern California, peaches. And so my only concern, and you can kind of see this too with an aerial view, Google Maps, right? Take a look at the roof coloring. It's a lot of the kind of tans, et cetera. Beazer is currently developing Wolfers Estates right up the street. Yeah, you guys, okay. So those homes are beautiful. They, the color schemes do seem to be in keeping with the characteristics of those neighborhoods around. I'm just curious, from a city staff level, did you take into consideration the color schemes of the surrounding developments? And do you have any concerns about, like, looks like bluish, grayish roofs appearing and a kind of craftsman style, which isn't really, doesn't seem to be in common with the, the rest of the architecture of the surrounding neighborhoods?
I will, I will be honest and say that this did go to the city staff as a part of the initial design review process. I was not tied to those conversations, and so I might be able to defer to our consultant who was a part of those conversations. But typically, we do look for, you know, consistencies with the surrounding neighborhood. And I don't want to speak for Beazer, and you know, their, their architect is here, so they could probably provide the rationale as to how they got to the color scheme.
I'll flag, flag that for you, I guess, because you were about to get up. So we'll flag that. The second is, with respect to lots A and B, which are described as having open space, what is this space? Is this going to be landscaped? Is it going to be something that looks aesthetically pleasing and in keeping with the overall neighborhood? Or is this just places where we're having to collect water?
I do believe that open space lot As and Bs are, serve as the, the, I'm sorry, the bio-retention basis for the development. They are typically landscaped, but because of the, just the nature of the bio-retention, you can't really plant a lot of, you know, roots, you know, trees that have roots. But typically, they are just landscape features of the development as a whole.
It's not like space that could eventually be contemplated for use as like a small community park or something like that. This has got to remain open for the very creatively named water hole.
Typically, yes.
Okay.
Hi.
I'm looking at you.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember which lot is associated, this kind of, this is broken to, yeah, here we go. So Lot B, one, you have the Centennial County Water Authority takes up a big swath of that. And then the rest would be just really used as the stormwater basin. On the other portion, Lot A is much bigger, and you have some existing trees, I believe, that will remain. And I suppose, to some extent, provided it doesn't mess with what habitat has been identified there, you know, could possibly use, be used as, as park. But, you know, you just have the one basin that, on Lot A, that would be just used as a basin.
Okay, yeah, because I'm asking, because we're asking Beazer to like recess windows and hang their eaves and all this kind of stuff. But then we have these very prominent dirt lots, like right off of Conway, right off of, what is that, Lennar, whatever that street is, Stanley. And it, it just kind of feels to me like it's not in keeping with the overall requirements aesthetically. So I guess I'm just flagging that for the rest of the commission. I, I don't know if that's even within the scope. Veronica's probably upset with me right now. But I don't know if that's within the scope. I'm flagging it. The final thing, and this has to do with the resolution before us, and maybe Derek can speak to this, but I noticed that in Section Four of the resolution, if there are, so there is the possibility of subsequent changes contemplated by Section Four of this resolution. But I noticed that those, if those contemplated changes actually do occur, the, this matter does not come back before this commission. And so it seems to me, if the prior commission wanted us to take into consideration this set of concerns, if we vote on it and then the, you know, the subject here changes, it should come back before us once more. I don't know technically how that's supposed to work, but I would like to hear why we would be removed from the process in the event of a subsequent change.
So, I'll go ahead and jump in on one component of that pointed question regarding Section Four of the resolution. Thank you, Commissioner Stevie. With regard to, again, clarifying that city staff are the ones who implemented the original condition that this design review come before the planning commission. Unfortunately, the full-time staff members who worked on this project and who were the reasons behind that are no longer with the city and Ivan and myself do not have that context as to why we can only infer. That being said, the direction, the input, the feedback that the commission gives tonight sets the baseline for this project's design moving forward. So, the zoning code does allow quite a bit of flexibility for projects streamlining through staff review. However, with the initial elevation of this design review before the commission for the initial development, architectural development, we would utilize feedback and input from tonight's meeting to guide decision-making moving forward. However, we are within, operating within the confines of the zoning code. And the zoning code does stipulate, Article 64 does stipulate things like color palettes, being soft hues, but it doesn't get much more descriptive than that as an example.
Other questions?
Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Jester?
Really, isn't a question, more of a comment, I think. Okay, so I understand that no public notice is required. But one of the very first things that I asked myself when I read the package was the question that Commissioner Barber had brought up initially. Why? Why was this, did staff, you know, recommend that this come back to the planning commission? It was really, really hard to dig up some old documents from 2022 and I think 2021. And I did a little bit of investigating and I really wasn't sure of the reason why. I would be interested to what the comments were back then from the public. Because I did see the minutes of a planning commission meeting. Didn't bring it, so I can't quote the chapter and verse. But there were 14 comments, one was neutral, three were in favor, and the rest were opposed to the project. And I couldn't help but wonder, well, is that why? Is that, was a concession made somehow by staff to bring it back to the planning commission? I mean, I don't mind. I think, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, the designs and everything are great, but this seems, doesn't seem like a thing.
Yes, as City Planner Maron has stated, you know, unfortunately neither of us were there at the public hearing. However, those videos for the planning commission meeting that recommended approval of this project are available on the city's YouTube channel. And the city council hearings are available, the videos are available on the city's website. And at those meetings, there was public comment that speaks to this opposition. However, we can't really discern as to why this condition ended up in the initial planning commission staff report and resolution.
If I could. So, when this came before the planning commission, I do recall that there were a number of comments related to this particular project. I do not recall that we even had a discussion on this particular condition. I think it was just in the, in the resolution that it had to come back to the planning commission. And I think that the prior city planner probably took it upon himself to have that recommendation come from staff because of the number of people that had submitted comments on this project. So, I think it made sense to the planning commission at the time because there was really no discussion on it. And that was what I recall, that there was really no discussion, no planning commission. It was a condition, we accepted the condition and moved forward. I believe I watched the city council hearing and that was not an item of discussion either. There was more concerns about the affordable housing piece of property, I think, than anything else. That's what I recalled. She's back now, you know, a year and a half. So, from my perspective, that's what I recall. I don't know if Vice Chair Barber or Commissioner McCarthy, if you recall anything different?
I don't recall anything. I'm 69 years old.
Well, I believe you seconded it, if I, if my reading was correct.
Nobody asked you. Before we close the hearing, you started to get up to address a point. Did you still want to? Commissioner Stevie, he was going to address something that you had brought up.
Well, do we, do we move on to another section where they present now? Or is this the appropriate time to address Beazer directly?
Right now, it's just.
It's just city staff, right? Yeah.
So, I've got some clarification questions. What's before this evening is not anything to do with landscape design? Because I didn't see any landscape plans, but I thought that that was a part of the code?
You are correct, Chair Wyler, in that Article 64 standardly expands beyond just architecture. However, the specific condition of approval speaks solely to the architectural designs. So, we are limited based on that condition.
And what I don't recall when we reviewed this originally was whether or not there were landscape plans. I, I just don't recall. Do any of you? Okay.
Yeah, typically as a part of the tentative map process, there is a conceptual landscape plan, but it's all conceptual at that stage.
Okay, so we did have a conceptual landscape plan because I would have thought it would have been unusual that we didn't. I just don't remember what it, what it looked like and if it addressed some of the concerns that were brought up this evening about, all right, what do we got? Are there lots back here or what? I'm assuming we don't.
It's still a matter.
Maybe that's a question that we can put forth to the applicant. Any other questions? At this point, if the applicant would, has the opportunity to give a presentation, or at least we can ask questions to the applicant.
Hello, Marco Hurtado with Beazer Homes. And just to touch base on what the commissioner was asking about the colors and these color schemes. So, it's, I understand the question and the presentation of it. We wanted to bring a fresh vibe to the community. As mentioned, there is a consistency with colors and elevation styles going on in the area. So, we wanted to break apart from that a bit, not go extreme, but just a soft touch, a soft homage to the modern elevations that were presented with the Spanish, the Craftsman and the Adobe. So, as far as the colors, it plays with that. But if you feel different, we could take another look and have our colorist take another look at that and present another path. But as far as our point of view, that's what we're bringing for, is just a fresh and new flavor to the palette.
What is your position with Beazer?
I'm the planning and design manager with Beazer Homes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
And I would just like to say, I appreciate that fresh vibe approach. I think the worst thing would be to match what is existing in the neighborhood at some points for some of these older schemes. So, thank you for that. I thought the colors were more than appropriate, along with all the material choices as well.
Questions on the applicant? Yeah, if you could address.
Oh, sorry, I wanted to follow up on that.
Commissioner Stevie, I'm sorry.
So, do you have, I appreciate that you're trying to bring some diversity. Do you have other schemes and, you know, materials from your other developments that are still different from, you know, that give you that objective of trying to make a little bit more of a fresh approach but aren't so different? In other words, is this something you could easily solve for? Or is this something that would be costly and time-consuming for you to solve for?
I'd have to get with our colorist to determine that. But we have, for each elevation style, we do have three separate color palettes. So, it's a total of nine that we would have throughout the development.
Do you recall if you did the same sort of approach with Wolford Estates?
We did.
Okay.
It's a lot to provide that many color options. The time it would take for the architect, your colorist to go back, you know, rearrange, pull from other projects, et cetera, is absolutely unnecessary in this instance.
So, I mean, I'm appealing to the interior, I mean, you're a design professional. You looked at this and you're like, this all makes sense conceptually to you from?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And again, I really do appreciate the fresh vibe.
As a design professional, I also second that.
Other questions of the applicant? The only question I've got is regarding the landscaping of those detention basin areas.
I'm going to counterpart.
Hi, Sutti Carney, I'm the project manager for this particular community and for Wolford. So, as far as landscaping the basin, Ivan's correct, it is minimal because it is a water quality detention and anything with roots or too much of a subsurface system is frankly just going to die. So, it's particular planting material and media that, you know, filters the water and also cleans it in the process. So, we are sort of limited in what we can do there. But I did want to speak to the basin that's on the north side, we call it Conway, North Conway South. There's a number of existing trees that we have, we are retaining. So, there'll be quite a few, I mean, it's, you know, quite a few eucalyptus trees that will be, you know, on-site. So, there's a basin component, I don't want to quote that slide, but, so there's a basin component and there's a lot of open space around that basin and there's trees, existing trees that will remain in that area. Nobody can see it from the area.
Was that, it was on the other plan, wasn't it?
Basin on both of those?
Yeah.
Lot B, was, is that Lot B, open space? Is that where you're talking about?
Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry, that area is where the San Diego County Water Authority is, on the other section of Conway there. Yep, correct. So, see the open area, you see the outline of the basin, that open area is essentially existing trees.
Okay, so, are these areas open to the residents? Or is this totally fenced off and nobody has access to it other than maintaining the basin?
Well, it'll be fenced, the HOA will be maintaining this facility, so they'll have access to it. Otherwise, it's not, it's not recreational by any means. So, it'll be fenced off from the, from the residents themselves, correct? Just, you know, either side, side or rear fencing, depending on the orientation.
All right, and then the only other question I had was probably for Mark. On the affordable housing portion of this, and it's more of a curiosity question, what's the anticipated timeframe on when that affordable housing component would be constructed?
I think, I don't want to speak to that. We're conditioned on the Conway site that we, I think it's our 38th or 39th time home, they have to be fully occupied.
Got it. All right, thank you. That was all the questions I have. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay. We move on to discussion? Comments from the planning commission? You know, the only comment that I've got is I have to agree with a couple of my fellow commissioners. I like the color palette, I like the change so it doesn't just match everything else that's in the community. I believe the code says that that, what needs to be done when you're in design review is to look at the other color palettes of the surrounding areas. You know, that seems a little archaic at this point. You know, it's good to have change and brighten up a neighborhood and not have the same color palette. So, kind of regardless of what the code says, I'm in favor of the color palette and what's been proposed by the, by the applicant. So, that was the only comment I had.
There aren't a whole lot of two-stories over there. So, this will be kind of unique. Everything on the, across from, right across the street, they're all pretty much single-story ranch style. So, this will be definitely different.
It will elevate the area for sure. And that is appreciated.
Any other comments? Entertaining motion? And if anybody makes the motion, if we could incorporate the comments that were, or the changes that were proposed or recommended by the city planner via the memo?
I'll make a motion, approve Resolution 2024-12 with the correction to 24 homes.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Voting has been opened. Gave up. And the vote is six-zero to approve the design review.
All right, thank you. Good luck with moving forward on the project.
Thank you.
We can move on to the PL 24-002, the 2023 General Plan Annual Progress Report. And we have a presentation by staff.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Priscilla Roldan and I'm an associate planner at the City of Escondido. And today I'm here to present on this item. This is the 2023 General Plan Annual Progress Report. And this progress report is here to provide an update to elected leaders, the public on some of the efforts the city has carried out throughout the 2023 calendar year. This is an informational item only, so there is no action required from you tonight other than to receive and file this presentation. But before we get started, let me just provide some background on the general plan. So, the general plan is the blueprint for how the city will grow in the next 30 years. And government code requires that there are seven topics or chapters covered as part of the general plan that includes planning for circulation, open space, conservation, land use, housing, safety and noise. So, at the very minimum, cities have to cover these topics that can be in the form of chapters. And cities can also choose additional topics or chapters to cover, which is why the City of Escondido has a total of 10 elements or chapters. And the additional chapters that are included include community health and services, growth and management and economic prosperity. So, as a visual representation, I went ahead and created a chart for you all so you guys can look at the relationship between state and the updated elements and how that relates to the Escondido General Plan chapters. Typically, the general plan is updated every 15 to 20 years. The last update for the general plan here at the City of Escondido was in 2012. And this graphic here is just a representation of the chapters and when they were updated, as well as some notes that relate to those updates. As far as annual reporting goes, on April 11th of 2023, staff brought forward the 2022 General Plan Annual Progress Report and says the city has made some progress on implementing the general plan. And so today, staff would like to provide an update and report the report. The full report is available as part of your staff report and will be available on the city's website after we present to the city council. As far as the presentation goes, however, I will not go over the 42 document, 42-page document today in detail. I'm just going to cover some of the highlights. And for clarity's sake and brevity, I went ahead and incorporated some of these highlights into different components or categories that includes housing, transportation, commuting services, local economy and conservation. As far as it relates to housing and this reporting relates to housing in 2023, the city council- the city council adopted the housing element, an updated version of the housing element on March 22 of 2023. And that led to the full certification of the housing element by the California Department of Housing and Community Development Services on December 12 of 2023. Another major milestone was a major development project, which is the Palomar Heights, began construction in 2023. So that was a total of 420 units from the total 510. As it relates to transportation, the city implemented a total of 19 capital improvement projects, which included sidewalk rehabilitation and lighting improvements. And the city also kicked off the Comprehensive Active Transportation Strategy, or CATS for short, which included research, it included outreach and education, and the development of a social pinpoint page, which you're seeing, which you're seeing on your screen now, and it's available on your staff report as well. The feedback collected is showcased there, so you're able to browse through and look at some of the comments that citizens made throughout the city. In terms of community services, the city's police department responded to a total of 94,109 calls for the 2023 year. The code compliance department went ahead and led some inspections for a total of 3,452. There were over 60, 600 students enrolled in school programming. There was over 16,000 participants for soccer tournaments and over 2,000 folks that attended some of the skate parks that are available here at the city. In relation to local economy, the city council adopted the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SATS for short, which takes a look at the city's economic data and creates a five-year action plan to better position the city's economy in the future. And for conservation, in 2023, the city completed 90% of the design of the Eagle Scout Lake Bridge. They received environmental permit applications or approvals, which is now, means that now the city can begin looking for funding for the 2024 year. That concludes staff presentation, and we welcome any questions.
Any questions of staff? Commissioner Jester.
Thank you for that presentation. Very good. I had a question on the CATS. I went and I got a chance to go on the website. Man, that thing is cool, but there's a lot of comments from the people. Have any of the things they've asked for or wanted been implemented?
Not yet. And that is a great question, Commissioner Jester. So as part of the CATS project, we will not only look at the data, but staff will also prioritize projects based on the comments and data that we receive from current conditions. So as part of the CATS, I mentioned that there was some research completed. So that includes the inventory of sidewalks and other metrics, so that way we can prioritize. So that's going to be taken into account and we're-
Okay, yeah, that's, that's good. One other question, and this is only because of my own ignorance. Housing, says that our housing element was certified. City received certification on our housing element. What is that?
I will let Veronica Maronis step in and help me with that question.
Great question. Great question, Commissioner Jester. So every jurisdiction within the state, every eight years must update their housing element in compliance with state law. This is one of the unique elements of the general plan because there is direct oversight by a state agency, the Housing and Community Development Department, which we refer to as HCD. You may have heard that acronym before. They review each jurisdiction's housing element for compliance with state laws. And as you may be aware, state laws are ever-changing and evolving. So every eight-year cycle is a whole new ballpark. So with the certification, so to speak, that's the term, the jargon we use to say that HCD has approved or signed off on our housing element, which is a very tedious process, but it opens up doors to things like funding and puts us in a better place for general plan compliance. So it's a good thing and it was a challenging cycle.
Thank you for that explanation. When the state comes through with some funding so that we can meet our goals or rhino, let me know, because I haven't seen it.
I know that may be intended as rhetorical, but I am willing to follow up with you if you would like on that.
Other questions of staff? I've, I've got a couple of brief questions. Thanks for the presentation. On the HCD and the certification of the housing element, it was certified, what, at the end of 2023? So does, is that when the time clock starts?
No, very great question. The, the cycle began in April of 2021. So it took two and a half years for the city to certify their element in the eight-year cycle. So we have about, what is that, five and a half years before the new cycle starts? And probably about three and a half years before we have to kick it all off again?
Yeah, and that's why I asked the question, because I know that it's a tedious process and it just takes a long time. And there's just back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth with the HCD, which is kind of too bad because we get it certified in 2023, but we have to start doing this again in a couple of, three more years and go through that whole process again. So the eight-year period, I don't know. It, I wish the process was a little more streamlined so that we could have a full eight years of really seeing the implementation of that document. It's just a comment, not much we can do because, you know, this comes from the state.
I think we were a little late too, weren't we? Okay.
Okay. If you could, could you pull up the slide that had everything in the, all the elements and the dates? So, yeah, that was the one. That one. So mobility infrastructure, that one is coming up. Economic prosperity. So some of these things, it got approved back in 2012. The timeframes upon which were mandated to update these, are they specifically cited? Because I think they are, but I'm not 100%.
Yes, great question. So each element may be subject to a different statute for updating. So for example, the housing element is on a strict eight-year cycle. Recent changes to government code also require the community protection chapter, which serves as our safety element and our noise element, but government code only stipulates the safety element, be updated with the most recent update of the housing element. So by updating the housing element, we trigger the update of the safety element. Other government code sections state, upon the next updating of two elements, you now are triggered on a third element, which is an element that is not necessarily mandatory for all jurisdictions. It's the environmental justice element. We are a qualified jurisdiction. We kicked off the safety element and the environmental justice element process back in 2022. It's been on a brief hold while staffing stabilizes. And then there is a new law that a lot of jurisdictions are just finding, just realizing, is coming to fruition, that requires open space elements be updated by January 1 of 2026 to address certain components. So.
So back in 2012, it was a comprehensive update to the general plan of all elements?
That is correct.
And, and since that time, we've, we've updated certain elements because what, of state law?
Of state law, private development requests, and city consistency to comply with certain components of state law.
So it appears that it's going to be some time before there's a comprehensive look at all of the elements as one package again? I mean, you know, 2012, I don't know, 12 years ago now. Is there any requirement that we have to update the entire thing as one comprehensive document?
So the state expresses verbally to staff who attend webinars or trainings on these that the state encourages an eight-year comprehensive update cycle. Now typically, to update a general plan comprehensively, you're looking at multimillion dollars to conduct all the necessary studies, to bring in the necessary expertise on each topic, and follow up with the creation of these formal documents. So that can be a very arduous task for jurisdictions to complete. It's not uncommon for jurisdictions to have a rather large gap. For example, City of Oceanside, who's currently undergoing, towards the tail end of their comprehensive general plan update, it had been about 40 years since they had comprehensively updated. So I would say while ours is trending towards a double decade, it's definitely not the worst. But I think there is a interest, you know, a general interest, given all of the changes that have come about, both in trends, development trends, state laws, to look at the general plan at a more comprehensive lens. But as you're aware, the city's structural deficit creates a very large challenge there. But it is something staff is aware of and discusses.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, I certainly appreciate the effort that staff goes through in trying to meet all these various requirements that come from the state. Sometimes they seem to be contradictory, but anyway, thank you, I appreciate the update. Any other questions of staff?
I do have one.
Commissioner Stevie?
I just need some clarification. So this certification process that we go through, it is for the purpose of obtaining funds? Or it is for the purpose of being compliant to state law?
It technically is both. So state law requires that cities have a compliant general plan. And being in compliance means you have the mandatory elements that have undergone their required statute requirements. So in this case, the housing element, you have to have it certified or approved by HCD. When you do not have a compliant housing element, you are then not, you do not have a compliant general plan, the larger umbrella of all these elements. In addition, there is a carrot with funding. So a lot of funding opportunities, such as SB 1 funding, I believe, SB 2 funding, PLHA funding, which is permanent local housing allocation funding, all of that you can only access if you have a housing element that is in compliance with state law.
Okay, so hypothetically, let's just assume that, well, let me ask this first. If we're not in compliance with state law, what happens? Besides the funding?
I'll defer to our attorney or counsel to give a brief-
Because it sounds like this is the kind of thing some cities are way out of compliance, like Oceanside 40-year plan.
Well, and when you're talking specifically about the housing element, the biggest, if we're talking carrot and sticks, the biggest stick out there is something called the builder's remedy, which you all might be familiar with, which is, allows for a developer to come in with a project that is not compliant with the city's zoning. And the city doesn't have a lot of say-so. Thankfully, we're not in that position anymore because we have a compliant housing element. That is really the biggest kind of legal ramification of the housing element.
Okay, because where I'm going with my line of questioning is a resource allocation question, right? I mean, this is the fifth or sixth meeting, and it seems like we regularly, you know, we regularly discuss the fact that the city is in a budget deficit situation, right? And it, you know, I was not aware of, you just said it costs multiple millions of dollars to do a comprehensive review. It seems like that must mean there is a substantial utilization of staff resources in order to maintain these compliance standards, in order to have funding. And my question is, on a balance sheet, are we obtaining the money from the state that is greater than the amount of money we're losing in staff costs? And at what cost to the city is the staff being, the staff's being tied up to like our ability to maybe build more homes and get more developments and therefore have more tax revenue? Or, you know, all of the sorts of other priorities we might have to bring revenue into our city?
It's a very detailed question. We do not have the data in front of us to give you an answer. And it's, we're happy to talk with our financial, our finance department. My guess is they also may not have that information at the ready. As part of the General Plan Annual Progress Report, we do report out on all the grants that the city receives, which does include state funding. For example, the pre-approved ADU program that you all saw last meeting is funded through local early action planning dollars, which required, I believe, a compliant housing element when we applied for it, which we had at that point in time. I do want to clarify with the Oceanside example, they did, of course, update their housing element throughout time. So it's not that they hadn't updated their housing element in 40 years. They just had not conducted a comprehensive update within 40 years. And I think that's a fairly common reality for a lot of jurisdictions for this exact reason that you're pointing out.
And whose job is it here within the city to take a look at how we're allocating our resources? And say, what is the minimum amount of resource we could dedicate to compliance? And reallocate resources to projects here in the city that advance our economic interests maybe more rapidly than would otherwise be done if we were allocating a substantial number of resources to this hamster wheel of compliance?
So I would say that, again, very large question, detailed question. Of course, our city manager in conjunction with the city council are the ultimate team that decide staff priorities in addition to city priorities. When it comes to the planning division and planning, it is the city planner who works with the current planning folks, as well as the long-range folks, which in this case, at this point in time, is Priscilla and myself, who work on the policy components of that. So from a planning, a specific planning lens, or, you know, a micro environment of the planning division, we are the ones looking at that cost benefit and providing recommendations as subject matter experts to our city manager, our deputy city managers, and other department heads in an effort to balance that out. So it's definitely a full, multi-pronged approach from staff.
Thank you.
Motion to receive and file? Yeah, if we don't have any more questions of staff, I think that would be fine. I think that ends that discussion. Thank you very much for the update. Future agenda items?
Future agenda items, yes. We will have, it's hard for me to go into future agenda items without going into the fact that we will have a meeting on July 23rd, where there will be a historic preservation information overview. So as you're all aware, Article 40 changes. Staff will be presenting information about design review of historic properties and historic preservation. Because then we will have a design review for a certificate of appropriateness that will be for a property on the local register and within the Old Escondido neighborhood. So that is slotted for the next commission meeting. And then there are future meeting, future items on the TFA that we see trending to come before the commission within the next two to three months.
Okay, thank you. No other oral communications came about?
No other communications.
Planning commissioners report, any, any reports on the planning commission? None. City planners report, which was the future items?
I do have one more announcement, which is that the July 23rd meeting will actually not be here in chambers. It will be within the Mitchell Room, which for those of you who are not familiar with the Mitchell Room, it is here at City Hall, but it is located on the more western wing of the building, facing the Center for the Arts parking lot that is right off of Valley Parkway. So I will provide an email with directions and guidance if you've never been there and where to park. But just so you're aware, the meeting will not take place here, and I'll follow up via email.
Perfect, thank you. Any other comments from the planning commission? All right, meeting adjourned.